Good evening and welcome to our June Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our July meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Steve Sullivan to do our prayer and Mike Strange, would you do our pledge for us? If you'll all stand please.
By your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for the town of Smyrna. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Lord, we ask that you be with these proceedings and be with the discussion here tonight. That would all be pleasing in your eyes. Continue to bless our town and our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one is our public comments. The town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the town council or a board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Pursuant to the town's public comment period, speakers are limited to three minutes. Additional comments may be submitted in writing. Amber, I did not see any public comments for tonight. So we'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order with KCI Technologies to provide configuration, training, documentation, and go-live support for the transition from CityWorks on premises to CityWorks Online. Hey Carl.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are requesting a change order approval for KCI. We last year signed an agreement with them to do analysis on the current system that we had to try and achieve the payment optimization for treasury and working with CityWorks payments. They did that analysis and through this period of time, we had a number of other events come up, including a security incident and in the May meeting, this council approved us going to CityWorks Online. At that time, I also mentioned we would be coming back with consulting services to support that. This request is to do that. The total for this request is $47,670.50. They're crediting the amount that we had from the previous to this total and so the total amount is about $66,000 to get all of the work complete that we were doing across the two projects.
Questions for the additional for CityWorks? For Carl?
Yeah, Carl, I have a quick question. I was reading through the contract and in pass two, it describes public access portal for up to 15 case types and then, but we only described 10 mock-up reports based on those types. So should those numbers correspond or not?
No, they should not. So the case types are separate from reports and what we're planning on doing is actually consolidating down about 42 reports to one report by parametizing these reports. So for a case type, which is pretty much a permit type, we'll have one report, but all those types will be one of the parameters you can select. So if I want to look at pool permits or fence permits or electrical permits, that'll be parameter selections along with a number of other fields. So the report types, the city of Lebanon runs on eight reports. So we think the 10 reports will be fine for us. That'll give us pretty much the core report plus some others that we've already looked at.
So what are the case types? I mean...
The case types are the different permit types.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Other comments or questions?
So the goal of the, part of what they are doing is to help with the search replication. Can you explain what the search replication is and why it needs to be?
So the, the search actually just, it changes in the new system. So we're going from what they call office companion to the respond client in part of this move. We're also going from version 11 of CityWorks to version 23 point something. So we're way behind in the functionality that we should be at. So this is all just to bring everything up to speed. The saved searches are changed to, I can't think of the correct term right now unfortunately, I'm sorry, but it changes to, it's a query, trying to think of the other term, something query. But anyway, we're going to change those to the queries and those will be what is used moving forward. But we're going to try to again consolidate those down by parametizing a lot of those. Right now, we have everything done, you know, an eight-foot fence permit is different than a six-foot fence permit, it's different than a four-foot. So we're trying to consolidate those all down, make them one with a bunch of parameters that we can use to select with.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Rutherford County Board of Education for the practice field area behind Smyrna Elementary School. Hey Mike.
Mayor, Council, I know y'all have seen this many, many times. This is the, the agreement between us and the county board of education for the practice fields at Smyrna Elementary. Basically, we use these for our leagues and every now and then some other groups back there. It's about 35 acres to the east of the school and then behind the school includes the barn and some of those fields back there. So, but we would just ask for approval. We do maintain, maintain these, mow these, that type of thing and the leagues use them, help us clean them up.
Um, questions for Mike on this? Mike, I have had a couple of people ask me about access to restrooms back there. Are there any porta-pots or anything back there?
Yeah, when the, when the leagues back there, they usually have those on site and then there's one in the bottom for a soccer group that uses them. But that, that's about it. Yes ma'am.
I had not been back there to look.
Make sure Gary's key fits those.
Plenty of room. That's a, just so you know, it's a three-year, it can be up to three years. So this year was a time to renew and then we can do it next two years.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item four is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the Rockwell Automation Contract Renewal 25 through 28 for the water plant. Mike?
Yes ma'am, that was a slight typo. It should be fiscal year 26 through 28. This is a three-year agreement. Annual tech support for the Allen Bradley PLCs and all the control panels. Cost is $21,740.40 and that is an increase of about $3,100 over the last contract.
Questions on this one? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Item five is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual agreement with Black Pearl Automation LLC for controls, engineering, and troubleshooting support for the water and wastewater treatment plants.
This is a new contract with a company that we have just recently used a few times. They've done an outstanding job and they, they kind of partner in conjunction with MR Systems. If anything's, you know, with the controls, DFDs, they'll install, they can modify and this is done on an hourly basis. So if we needed them, it would be done on an hourly basis.
Questions on the contract with Black Pearl?
One question. Mike, do they have a local office?
I do not know that answer Jerome, but I can find out and let you know.
Yeah, sure. I just know that a lot of times when those go out, they need to, you know, be local or responsive.
I know we had something go out a month ago and they responded really quickly. So I'm assuming the answer is yes, but I can find that out for you and let you know.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item six is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Experitech Incorporated for annual software support, technical support, and troubleshooting for the utilities department.
So this is for the GasGator equipment. It includes software upgrades, anything for the remote units, which we have at each station, a remote login subscription. We also have a bank of 40 hours. In the agreement, it does say via phone or internet, but they actually will send somebody to a site if we need them to and then included in that. For some reason, we did not have an agreement with them last year, but the agreement prior to them was about $4,800 less than this agreement. They've, they've gone up quite a bit. This current contract's for $13,106.26.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the Highland Avenue Phase One Imperial Boulevard Water Model Project with PCS of Tennessee.
Mayor, before he begins, just going back to the question on item number five, they're out of blast cases.
Blast cases, okay.
It's pretty close. Okay, thanks. Sorry, number seven.
So this is the bid for the Phase One of the Highland Avenue Water Model Project. We went under the railroad tracks across from Nolan on the Lowry Street project. It'll come down through there, up Imperial Boulevard and onto Rock Springs and tie in. The low bidder was PCS of Tennessee and all their stuff has been verified. Bid was 896, 865, 13. This is for the coming fiscal year budget and we had 2 million in the budget, so it came in well under budget.
Questions for Mike on this one?
Let's go in the backyard so those people won't hear us.
No, it, okay, where it comes under the railroad tracks, it's kind of a vacant piece of land. Well, yes, I guess it does because not Highland, Imperial. This will run right by Imperial, yes.
Item eight is approval, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Corson Fire and Safety for Fire Extinguisher Services. Is this the first time you've been before us in official capacity?
The first time I actually planned to, yeah. You called me once before.
Oh, we put you on the spot before.
You surprised me a couple of times, yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, that could happen again, so just be on your toes.
Sure. Yeah, this is just a fire extinguisher and related services. We accepted the lowest and best bid from Corson. It includes not only refilling of the extinguishers, but also inspection and hydrostatic testing of pressure cylinders.
Questions for Brian on this?
Yeah, Mayor, I have one question. In the bid tab, it shows the line items. Do we have quantities and then a total for each of those that bid, bid on this project?
We do, but since it's citywide, it would take some time to, for me to set those quantities. The total on the bid is about $8,200. The total cost citywide is $8,200. I could get a breakdown by item.
Yeah, well, I was just trying to figure out how we determine the low bidder.
Yeah, well, yeah, what we do is we, we do take those individual line items, how many of those, each of those items we have and its total. And Chief Lawrence is in, is in charge of that and I just got the total today. So it's around $8,200.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
You probably don't know this, but Sierra Muy, have we not used Pied Barker for, forever?
We have, they bid on it, but due to, they were actually slightly higher than Corson.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't matter, I just...
Yeah, they, they are the only bidder that didn't come in with exceptions, but they were not low-bid.
Other questions? Okay. Item nine is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with T-Mobile to provide cradle points for the police vehicles for data connection.
Hello again, I'm helping chief with this one. This is a purchase, a purchase request for 46 cradle point routers at a time I like to call BC, which is before Carl. They had bought a group of tablets in one of the years of replacing the computers in the police vehicles and they did not put modems in the vehicles, but they were tablets that had a SIM card within the tablet and they proved not to work real well. So we went back to putting routers in the cars with the computers. Those are all coming due to be replaced this next year. Right now, T-Mobile is having a half price sale on these, so instead of $1,000, we're paying $499 for the 46 routers. We would buy the service through T-Mobile anyway. So this is some, you know, cost-effective way for the town, for us to take care of that need and we're going to be working with vehicle maintenance to figure out how to get those into the vehicles.
Okay. Questions for Carl for these data connections? Okay. Item 10 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the annual agreement with Motorola to provide service for the department's radio and dispatch services. Chief?
Mayor and Council, yeah, this is an annual agreement with Motorola for our radios and dispatch services. I pulled the last three contracts for the last three years and the difference you will see in the amounts is for this year, we had certain radios, an amount of radios that rolled off contract or service, so the amount is less. I spoke to James about this and so as we add new radios, you will see an increase probably next year as we add new radios to be serviced under contract. So that's the difference in the pricing.
Questions on the Motorola?
Yes, Chief, I have a question. There was two service agreements in there and I'm not sure, you know, which is, what they're for each.
Okay.
That's just, one's probably for the radios and one's probably...
The one that was for around $73,000 was the original contract?
Okay.
And then the $38,000 one was the renewal contract. So that's the, the price discrepancy that the chief was discussing?
I see, I see. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with VersaTerm and Public Safety U.S. Incorporated.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this, this program that we're wanting to go to is for, it's called Blue Team and IU Pro. This is the company that actually designs the program. It actually is a very good tool to use for officers to enter reports specifically use of force, pursuits, citizen complaints, any kind of incident like that. The officer can go into the Blue Team system, enter the report, it gets routed to the supervisor. It's a lot easier to keep track of the, it going through the chain of command for review, say use of force, all the way up to the captain or the chief if it needs to be investigated. Then the IU Pro system is what would be moved over, the report would be moved over to this system for an investigation to start. It also, with IU Pro, it archives all the activity from an officer, use of force, anything they've been involved with. It keeps like a profile of that officer in there and also any kind of professional standards case that's worked by our investigator. If there's a complaint on an officer or use of force that has to be reviewed, that, that profile on that case can be retained in IU Pro and archived in there.
Does this program need to be able to interact with any other programs? I know sometimes we'll have, not just in your department, but others, we'll get a new program and it won't interact and with other programs, no standalone?
No, it's basically just used for reporting for officers and then maintaining a historical profile for them and also case files if there is a complaint on an officer, a case has to be worked.
Okay. Other questions for Chief?
What's the cost on this? I didn't see it on it.
$7,700.
Okay.
Yeah. Is it 21 something? 21, 700.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we will put that on the agenda.
Don't go anywhere.
Item 12 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the COPS Hiring Grant Fiscal Year 2025 Application for the Police Department. How are you?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so we are asked for a resolution for approval of the 2025 COPS Hiring Grants administered by the Justice Departments for $625,000 for five brand-new officers. So if awarded, we will receive up to $125,000 per officer spread out over three years. This is a 75, 25% cost share, so we will cover $156,250 while the Department of Justice will cover the remaining 75% at $468,750.
And if I could, just go ahead and include some background data here. These officers were requested in the, in the budget that we're just about to begin and obviously priorities, we had to pick and choose which positions to bring on. Obviously, public safety is a priority, of course, but I encouraged Jason to look at, Police Chief to look at this COPS grant as an alternative. Bringing on the grant coordinator was just an opportune time to take a look at that. If we implement, we, and get awarded this grant, we would fold that into the FY '26, '27 budget.
If we do receive it, do you have concerns in regards to continuing to use it after the grant runs out in regards to, to fit employees?
Well, I think, I think the natural progression of our sales tax and other revenue growth will absorb the full brunt of the salaries by the time we get to that point after the third year. We will have some upfront costs of the equipment and the vehicles, but that ability to get that cost share is going to help absorb that.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if this question's, Dave, something you want to answer to the chief, but for years, we've been trying to get to full staff. Where are we on that?
We have one or two vacancies in total in the police department. This is something that we've been talking about recently and to Mr. Craig's came to me and basically said, this is the first time, and Chief said, this is the first time I've seen so few vacancies in our police department since all the time I've been here and Jeff's time as well. So we're doing really good. We're running a, a better than normal and good vacancy rate on our police department, specifically with the officers.
Okay, good. And the other reason I was asking is I was looking at job postings on our website and I didn't see police on there for one of the first times. So that's why I was wondering. We must be getting close because we're not actively looking, it looks like.
I asked him today, there's a lot of shift changes that are occurring in our core system, which is our HR portal. And my question to him today is why am I seeing so many of these changes recently? And he said, it's because we've got a whole bunch of new people that have come through the academy and we've got a lot of people, new folk, so that's a good thing.
I noticed in our weekly report, I think there was only five job openings is what it showed. Is that about right? Was it about five? So I think that goes to show the pay table that we've just worked on was beneficial, so...
To go a little further into the rabbit hole, how's the Fire Department as far as openings and such?
I think we're about in the same boat, but if you have specifics, Chief, feel free.
What was the question, I'm sorry? How many vacancies do you have?
Currently, we have one vacancy. We have, we did receive one resignation earlier this week. Gentleman is, is moving, so that will give us two. We have five in the academy, so we are doing, we're doing well also.
Great.
And just a trailer to the next meeting, I got Chief Goss going to be giving you guys just an update of the progress since he's been here. So we'll have more information on those sort of things for you next, next time we meet.
So on this issue here, if we've got, I know it says we cannot use it for people that, positions that we already have filled in. If, do we have to be at full budget and then use it for the next two or three, four people? Or can we, if somebody leaves, can we use it for filling that position as a new person?
Right, so according to the, according to the NOFO, they say these five new officers have to be a brand-new on the budget, so they cannot be previously on the budget. It can be used for people who have been laid off or retired, but I don't think that applies at the moment. But essentially, once, if somebody leaves within that time period, the Department of Justice said, that's okay, that's allowed, we just need to essentially replace them and send it in the report so they can still qualify as part of the five in this five-year performance.
So if we've got a budget of, let's just say 50 officers and we're at 48, those two that we fill in that position can or cannot be used with this grant if we get it?
So it cannot be used.
Cannot be, okay, we got to get it to 50 and then the next five would be used, is that correct?
Like essentially add, make it to 55, if you're trying to get to 55 essentially.
So we have, in essence, we have to, we have to increase our FTE count in order to qualify for the grant.
So if we're not ever at our budget, can we get those other five?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If we're at, let's say our budget's 50 and we've only got 48 people.
Right.
We've got to get to 50 before we can use those.
No, no. Vacant positions is one thing, but if we were to only hire, using your scenario, 53, right, that would mean that was, that was two existing positions.
That's correct.
So no, we would have to order five additional above the 50.
Okay.
Yeah. Mayor, I have a question. First of all, I'm glad we have a grant person on staff and appreciate it. They know all the key words to put in the grant applications. And whoever developed the PowerPoint in this information packet, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Dennis? Dennis, just out of curiosity, just because the position is new, about how many grants currently are you looking at?
So I've looked at quite a few at the moment. I'm working on two. I submitted, yesterday I submitted the Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant, the $4.1 million one. So we're going to wait on that one. And this COPS grant and then we're also going to work on the hiring grant for the Fire Department as well. And then after that, it's some work with DOT. We're going to try to go out there, some of us from the public works and see if we can talk to them about what grants are possibly, can we do right away?
And I talked to Todd a little bit about this. Greater Nashville Regional Council is also a great source of grants that are out there that we might also want to look at. But Dave, have we kind of started talking to departments themselves and saying, look, things that you might not have gone for in the past just because of not having staff to be able to, we now have Dennis on staff to do that?
I have not because Dennis has done a fabulous job. Just his first, within the first couple of weeks, he had met with most, if not, he might have been wrapped up by this point, meeting with each department head and talking about some of the things that they do. Additionally, he's working on our PINI right now, which has to be submitted to GNRC. I passed that along to him because I thought it was a great way to get exposure to all of the capital projects that we have in our CIP. So he can kind of get a feel and make, connect the dots between what's available out there in terms of grant funding and then of course what we, what we're looking to buy, so.
Good. Okay, perfect. And I just don't remember, did, is he presenting stuff in our weekly report as well?
Not yet, but as we start to develop the grants program, I certainly would like to see. We do have a little bit of grants information.
And finance, under finance, yeah.
Yeah, but probably grant status report would be something that we can...
Especially once he's applied for.
Hate to give directives here on the daisier to you Dennis, but yeah, putting grant information, status updates within the weekly report is something that we can look to do.
Perfect, okay, great, thanks Dennis.
Do you know how many times we've used the COPS grant in the past?
What I've heard from Captain James Scott is we've done it once around early 2000, I believe. It might have been the COPS Hiring Grant or some other kind of hiring grant, but essentially that might have been the first one, but this is really the first modern one that we're doing at the moment.
Great.
1996. I just wanted, sadly brought that in. That's what I recall.
We hired 12. It was Andy and I got hired and then the next 12 were on the COPS grid.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thanks. Okay, item 13 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the annual agreement with TDOT for litter pickup, mowing, and maintenance of state right-of-way in town limits.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is our annual contract with the TDOT. Includes three major parts. One of them is roadway maintenance at $169,782.74. Mowing, the right-of-ways of the state roads, they're going to be giving us $50,300 and then litter pickup along the state routes, $14,076 for total contract not to exceed of $234,158.74.
Questions for Tom on this?
Honestly, Tom, it seems light. Does, does that include like Jefferson Pike, Lowry, I guess what other, Sam Ridley?
Has three state roads on there.
Includes, yeah, just the state roads.
Lowry, Lee Victory and...
But it's only, yeah, okay. It's only $50,000 for all of those. It just doesn't seem like a lot of money for that amount of grass cutting.
No, but you know, they're, at the same time, their expectation is, you know, they, that money would fund probably one cut a month is what, how they kind of look at it.
But that's not what we're planning, right?
No, no, sir. That's not what we're planning.
Well, but that's kind of what we're doing. But that's not what we're planning.
The rain has been a little bit against us, but yeah.
Does it increase for Jefferson Pike?
It will increase for Jefferson Pike.
I mean, how, when does that happen or when does it...
That should happen after, I think we might have some money for Jefferson Pike on here, but it will, that will become our responsibility after the contractor is complete with his work and then transfers it back over to TDOT and us to maintain.
Any idea when that happens?
Just estimating, I would think late summer, early fall.
We do an addendum to this contract when that happens or we wait it out until next year?
TDOT, I've asked before and stuff like that and there's times they even made a mistake in their contract. It didn't include enough mileage and they said, I'm sorry, that's just what you're getting. It was our mistake, we admit it, but you're not getting any more than that.
So who's cutting it now out there?
On Jefferson Pike?
Yep.
The contractor.[1799.21] The contractor.
Todd's weed eating, Gary's cutting.
I didn't hear what you said.
The contractor is responsible for that.
So Dave, let's have a little bit of discussion. You and I have had quite a bit of discussion about mowing and weed eating and trash pickup around town. And so can we kind of have a little bit of discussion about what we're kind of looking at? I know you've had discussion with Tom about it.
Sure. We've been kind of, kind of behind the eight ball a little bit because of the weather. It's been very difficult for, for our crews to manage, manage keeping up with the grass based off of, off of those weather conditions. But also I've just been having discussions with Tom, just trying to look at different ways to, to address it, given the vast amount of priorities that they have. And also recognizing that a lot of those priorities are occurring at the same time and that's when the weather's good, right? So Tom, Tom, myself and Todd are just trying to work on some, looking at some options and alternatives that we can come back and present at another time to just enhance the level of service as it relates to the landscape maintenance.
Well, and we, we understand as a council, it is a small department. We get that. And I mean, you're looking at all the things they have to do. But we also want to make sure that staff understands our, our expectations and how the community looks in regards to the weed eating and the grass cutting and the trash and all that. Because I think it's a reflection of our community. And so, and I think the citizens have come to expect that too. So I hope that you all can move forward on that pretty quickly so we can get a handle on some of the areas that need some attention. So, okay.
Let me ask a question, I guess about it. When we start looking at the residential areas and people's grass growing in the street in front of their house, whose obligation is it to cut that? Is that not the residential, the owner?
Yeah, I think it's per ordinance. Jeff, you can correct me on that. Per ordinance, they are supposed to mow and maintain either up to back a sidewalk or back a curb.
So like when we go in and put a sidewalk in, you got that one little spot right there between the, the curbing and the sidewalk, they should cut that too, correct?
Yes, yeah.
To the roadway.
Right.
And that may be something that we need to do, some sort of public service announcement on just so that they understand what their responsibility is in helping.
And same thing for the businesses too, correct? In front of their business.
Yeah. Okay. Other items?
Thank you, Tom.
We'll move on to item 14, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with TDOT for Penn 129828 Florence Road Sidewalk Project.
All right. So we had a little bit of money left over in our phase of NEPA and design. Currently, we're in right-of-way acquisition phase. So with the money left over in those phases, we can roll that forward into right-of-way. And so we're going to be rolling forward about $40,000 into that phase and be able to use that to purchase the right-of-way for that project.
I mean, all kidding aside, that, this project has been a long time coming.
12 years.
Yeah, 12 years. Any idea on actual, no?
Ma'am.
No timeline?
No timeline.
He doesn't want to say.
In the next 10 years, it will be done.
Yeah. But you know what? I think this is one of those perfect examples of we were so excited to get a grant and sometimes the grants just, because I mean, honestly, it's been how long?
I think in 2019, I know before COVID, I think 2019 is when initiation started going as far as like paperwork getting put forward.
This is the one I'm embarrassed when people send me a message and they keep saying, is it coming? Is it coming? And you're like, yes, it's coming, but don't hold your breath on it. So, yeah, so.
I bet if we got Charles up there, he'd give us a timeline.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
A timeline for Tom. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for continuing to work on this one. I know it is out of our control. So we appreciate that.
Thanks.
So item 15 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the scope and fee proposal for Sane Associates for Professional Services Traffic Impact Study Review for the LifePoint, Queen Cliff, Riley Downs, and Linwood Residential Developments.
Hi, Mayor and Council. This is a proposal that Councilman Dempsey came up with that going to a third-party review since these were so large. Like I said, they came from four different developers. So this, go through and have this consulting firm look at their methodology, make sure that it is state of the art and current best practices for roadway upgrades that they're coming with.
So Dave, I know this was in some of the list of questions that I had for tonight's meeting. But just so everybody else knows, the $6,000 is a pass-through amount for.
Yes, correct.
Perfect. Other questions?
Yes, Mayor, I had a question. There's some exclusion services listed in there. Charles, do you think like onsite visits? And do you think they'll need to do any of those?
No, because we, like I said, this is, we cut that scope down to keep it that they're just reviewing. Because like I said, they are for traffic studies that have been done stamped by, you know, registered engineers. So we didn't need them to recreate what was already done. Just making sure that they're reading the numbers right and not being too conservative on what they feel is their impact.
And then these four, four, I guess developments or four different traffic studies consist of 1,856 units total.
Correct.
Yeah. And that's one on Amityville Road corridor.
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item 16, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory Incorporated for the drug testing services for the Town of Smyrna Court probation.
Hello. Yes, ma'am. This is for, we've been operating apparently without a contract for the drug testing down probation. So we bid it out. There are only two entities that could accommodate us. And Redwood was actually who we've already been using, but they coincidentally are also the cheapest. So that's who we've tentatively signed up with.
Okay. Questions on this?
Yeah. How often do we use those services?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's under the terms of the probation from the court for, for the defendants that come in. I think we use it daily. It's just, you know, the folks that report in on their probation.
Sure. Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask you a question you may not be able to answer, but how did this slip by us that we didn't have a contract in place with a company?
Well, my understanding is we had one that had just expired and we're just operating as though it was ongoing. And then, then Anna, she's found quite a bit of stuff that probably isn't done by the book. So she was the one who discovered it.
Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item 17, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute agreement with Brenda Walsh, Boozer and Company PC and CBRE for acquisition and appraisal services for the Stewart's Creek Sewer Trunk Line Project.
Yes, ma'am. We discussed this a little bit last time. So what's on this agreement is for Brenda, Brenda Walsh, she's the negotiator. Brandon Malone with CBRE, he would be the lead appraiser. And Ted Boozer with Boozer and Company would be the review appraiser. Remember on SRF projects, you have to have an appraiser, review appraiser, and of course, the negotiator. There's total for the entire project, 104 tracks. Phase one, which gets us to Linwood, there's 65 tracks, but overall 104 tracks. The total cost for this would be $826,800. Now remember, we already have in place the $1,760,000 SRF planning and design loan at 1.21% interest. It will pay for the negotiator, appraiser, and review appraiser.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this?
Yeah, I have a quick question, Mike. In the, in the, no additional material was sent out to the council by Amber. And that lists those 104 tracks at $4,200 a track for the appraisal services. But did I see in there somewhere in the original contract, $1,500 per track for acquisition and documents?
That's for the negotiator.
Negotiator. Okay. So that's separate from the 4,200.
The one you have, the CBRE is 4,200. That's the, the big appraisal.
Okay.
The negotiator, which is Brenda Walsh, is 1,500. And the review appraiser, Boozer and Company is 2,250.
2250.
Correct.
All right.
Other questions on this? Okay. Item 18 is consideration of the ordinance amending the Town of Smyrna Missile Code Title IX Business Peddlers, Solicitors, and the Like, Specifically Chapter One Peddlers Relative to the Transient Vendor Permits and the Addition of Chapter Six Relative to Door-to-Door Solicitation. It's Jeffrey, are you taking this?
I will.
Okay.
So the first section, which is just the amendment to 9102. And what we've done here, this is just to address and to clarify that when someone is going to a location as a peddler, streetbarker, solicitor, transit vendor, et cetera, that a separate permit is required for each location. So they wouldn't just get one permit and then go three or four places within the town through. So it's just clarifying. I believe that's the way they've been doing it, but I think something had come up recently and someone had questioned, well, can I not just go anywhere?
Anywhere.
So that clarifies on 9102. And then of course, we get to the, to the meat of the change here on the door-to-door solicitation. And so we have a new chapter under Title IX that's entitled Door-to-Door Solicitation. And so we did make a few changes since we had talked about this. It did not include no trespassing sign. I felt like that was going to be confusing. We already have no trespassing laws and those types of things. And so let's keep it to the solicitation issue, which I think will work out best for everyone. It clarifies that each resident must be identified to be on the registry. So they're not able to say, because there could be some constitutional suspect issues if we just said, well, this neighborhood doesn't want any solicitors. It's fine if they put that up there, but those can be changing all the time. You got to make sure, how do you know that all 100% signed off? Because you could have one and we don't want to run afoul of any First Amendment if there are someone that, that is fine with people coming to sell them things at their door. Then we kind of talked a little bit more, some of, some of the items we talked about is how it's going to be maintained and those types of things. But within the ordinance, mainly deals with just the, the list itself and the enforcement of such. And that, once you put your, your home on the list, and it will not be your name as far as what the solicitor's getting, it's just going to be the address. This is no solicitation. And so once it's on there, it'll be on there until we, every so many years, we can come along and say, okay, we're going to update this. So just if you move out, it's still going to be there, but we will need to update it every few years. But we're not tied into how many years that is with this ordinance. Also, we added in a provision that should there be any contradiction with earlier parts of this code, which deals with peddlers and solicitors and those types of things, that this, this one shall, this chapter shall take precedence. And keep in mind, this is only dealing with commercial solicitation, which is for profit. So they're already exempted out if you are a nonprofit, if you're a school, if you're any of those things. We don't require those folks to obtain a permit for such. Also, just of note, besides the no solicitation list, we're making it a municipal code violation that if you see a sign that says no solicitation and you still go, that that's also prohibited. Now, it'd be a little bit harder for us to control that. And we're going to encourage everyone to become, get on the list. I know that Mr. Santucci has several ideas about maybe giving some stickers or those types of, of uniform identifiers for the program. But this would at least set us up in the right direction to do those things.
Dave, have you decided what department this is going to go through and how people would sign up and that sort of thing yet? Have we gotten that far along?
Yeah, well, we think we can utilize technology to manage this pretty well. The biggest problem that I see, and if I can just talk about implementation a little bit, the biggest problem I, I see is really going to be the perception versus the reality of what we're gonna, what this is going to result. We're not going to be able to use any other means in what we have today for those solicitors who have not registered with the town. If they just go out there and start doing it, it, it's going to really just be the same mechanism that we have. Now, we do hope, I do think that if we develop a sticker, a no solicitation official sticker, that that would be helpful. And anybody who registers on the site, they can simply just come here to Town Hall and say, hey, I've registered for the no solicitation list. Can I have my sticker? And we'll check that list if they're there, show the ID, matches up, give them their sticker. They can post that right there on their door, next, on their window or prevalent spot where somebody who was soliciting could see. But the reality is, is we can't really change individuals', businesses' behaviors. And so we believe that this program will be more of a deterrent than what we have today. We hope that it will put a dent in the issue. It certainly will not resolve it. But the mechanism for enforcement will remain the same. You'd have to call PD non-emergency to, to report an issue that you have at, at your home related to solicitations that, that are either feeling as though it is an unsafe situation or they will not leave. And now it becomes a trust fashion issue and those sorts of things.
And like we talked about before with the PSA thing, I think once we get this up and going, I agree. I mean, I see so many things on Facebook about people and they don't know that we currently have something in place that they have to register. They, they have to go through Amber. They have to have a background check. So I think educating our public on what's already in place and what this is going to do. And then somehow if we can come up with something, once you do register your house, that we can get them the bullet points of what this actually means and what it will do, if we can provide them that when they register as well.
Yeah, I think putting that as part of that registration process disclaimer, here's what we're doing, how it works, what you need to do.
Agreed. Okay. Other comments or questions?
Just follow up on what Jeff said. I think you mentioned that even though you have a no solicitation sign at the entrance of your subdivision, and if all the HOA members or residents aren't signed off on it, that really doesn't prevent someone to come in there, solicit.
Correct, correct. And the reason being is because of, just through case law and those types of, of issues, we've got to be really specific that, that individual residence has made a, a statement or intent that I do not want solicitors. And it's not us as the government saying, we've made a decision for all these people, for them, that they won't be.
Well, the reason I asked, I think it was your subdivision that was wanting to put a sign up out at the gates there. And so I just wanted you to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure they'll be calling me if someone comes.
Do we have a, do we have a list of all the HOAs in town? No? I was just wondering if we did. Would it be worth sending something out that said, you know, that's not going to get the entire subdivision a blanket that everybody falls under the no solicitation?
Mayor, I'll look, because I know through the census Mitch and Mark had provided me something through, I think the Secretary of State's office, that we may be able to compile some information of HOAs within the city.
If we do, I mean, I think that'd be a great way to get that information out for them to let their homeowners in their subdivision know that this program is out there. So just something to think about.
It also, I mean, it's, my neighborhood's in the same boat, but we don't have an HOA. But we, but there is a sign at the front of our subdivision that says no soliciting. So it, it doesn't, I mean, HOA is obviously one way to communicate it, but it really applies to any subdivision. And that's, I've had that conversation with homeowners in my subdivision several times, that we can put the sign up, it maybe shows what you would wish to happen, but there's really no enforcement, right?
Yeah.
Right. The peddlers don't have to know that.
Right. Well, we hope they don't, right?
Yeah. Um, just while we're on this topic, just I'd like for council, as you're driving around Smyrna, I've started to notice more and more of the vendors popping up in parking lots and things like that. And I know currently that that's allowed if the business owner allows it. Just for, I'd just like for us to look at that and see if there's some things that we might want to bring back and revisit with just how the town. and revisit, um, with just how the town is starting to, to look as you drive through town. So, maybe if you can do that over the next couple of weeks, and then we can have some discussion if there's things that we wanna look at with codes enforcement or new ordinances, or, everybody may be fine with how everything is, but I'd like for us to look at that as well as the festoons, as Jeff likes to say, and all of the blow-up little men and, and all of that. So, um, if y'all could just kind of be observant and see if there's anything that you'd like to have discussion about.
Before, before we move on, one thing I was gonna ask for clarification on was the review. You said after a number of years, we would review the policy or?
No, you, we would look, look at our list and see, do we need to update it as far as?
But are we gonna have like a set time? 'Cause you said at some point in the future, in, I think, had like three to five years, is that what you're thinking?
It just gives us the, the ability to do it, it's gonna probably depend on manpower, and we don't know how this is gonna go the first time.
Okay.
To see, so I would hate to lock in.
Gotcha.
Amber and them to, they just finish it up and now they gotta review it, so. Just make it where it can be done, it just, it's up to us on when we want it.
You know, they don't have a census to do anymore.
She's very upset about that.
I've got plenty to do, I promise.
Um, I have had somebody on Facebook ask, how can some, can someone explain how to register for this no solicitation policy? Well, at this point, there's not registration yet, so it'll be coming in as soon as?
Artie said if we could've done this alongside the census, we probably would've gotten a great response.
That's right, that's right. So, hope, um, once we set a process in place, we will make sure that that is out to the public and let the public know how you can register.
Two months.
What?
Two months.
We hope, maybe.
It's gonna go through two readings.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
At least.
At least.
At least, yeah. So, item nineteen is consideration of a resolution to approve funding for nonprofit organizations for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Well, so how does it feel to like be on your own up here?
Feels good.
Good!
It feels good, it's a little scary still, but. Good.
I think Mike said he saw Rex running around in his shorts today.
Oh!
He's still hanging around.
Well, good. That's what, I don't know that I've seen Rex in shorts.
I would assume, I would assume his legs are really white.
Correct.
Correct?
Well, maybe with a little more golf, that he'll be able to do, that, that'll, I don't know, so.
Was he grinning pretty big, though?
I didn't even see him, he was in and out.
I was faking it, said yes.
I bet it was a.
Yeah.
Ear to ear.
Yep. Okay, so nonprofit organization funding?
Yes, so anytime the town appropriates funding for nonprofits, the comptroller requires, requires us to pass an additional resolution that states the agency, purpose and amount of any funding prior to actual disbursement. So, these are the nonprofit amounts that were previously reviewed at the budget retreat and have, um, passed through all the budget readings.
Okay. We have to do this each year, are there questions about this?
These are the amounts and the entities that were recommended by the committee.
No.
Nope.
No. These are ones that are in the actual budget, the, then the Smyrna Charity Assistance Fund at thirty-five thousand, that's the blanket amount that we give.
So we just, these are the amounts that when we're discussing budget, we also discuss these amounts.
Correct, they're in the budget.
And they're not recommendations from the charity assistance.
Correct, correct. Charity assistance gets a blanket thirty-five thousand, and then they don't always give out the entire thirty-five thousand.
And this total is seven twenty-four, almost seven twenty-five.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that was in that, um, budget on that, that was in that, when we were looking through budget, um, it's that top.
The binder, yeah.
Yeah, in the binder.
Of course, mentioning sixty percent of that or so was the library.
And, and chamber.
Yeah. Other questions? Okay, item twenty is consideration and authorization of a list of items to be auctioned through online surplus sale with GovDeals.
So, you have all received a list of surplus items that we are hoping to sell at auction. The list includes vehicles, traffic lights and various other equipment. We are seeking permission to conduct an online auction to sell these items. The auction will be advertised through the Murph's World Post on the website and on Channel Three. All surplus items will be sold online through GovDeals.
Questions on this?
Steve, you remember when you were a little boy and you wanted that fire truck in your van?
There's one in here. I've already looked.
Telesquirt now.
It's a ladder truck, I've already looked.
Well, there you go.
I don't, I don't know where I'll park it.
When will these be posted, will it be after we vote on July eighth?
I'm not sure the answer is.
Okay, and then how long will they be posted for?
Um, it's usually several weeks, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
If you could, if you could.
You have your eye on something?
Yeah, yeah.
Jerome has items, he wants to make sure that he can last after, that's right, that's right.
Jerome, don't, don't vote against me on the fire truck.
Don't bid against shit.
Just reach deep.
My pockets aren't as deep as her, what?
I don't have a, um, childhood desire of a fire truck, so you're safe.
Just the motorbike, right? The motorbike?
Jerome, you probably need a traffic signal to go in your garage, don't you?
Well, I've already got one. I might need a few more.
How about the three?
Okay, we digress.
That's right. Okay, um, item twenty-one is approval in terms of a revised open door policy for inclusion in the town employee handbook. We had asked, um, for staff to go back and add a few items, um, to this, and Jeff, I'll let you have some discussion on this.
Uh, yes, as we've, uh, figured it out pretty well, the, the main gist of the, uh, open door policy that, that HR presented, there was one, uh, area that, that council had requested a little more specificity regarding, uh, who will be communicated with regarding complaints against, uh, certain individuals. And then you'll see there, we added under a different section so that we didn't confuse, uh, in the handbook for the employees of where they're supposed to go. This is just kinda tracks with how it should be dealt with as far as communication with the council. And it states that any formal complaint lodged against the town manager, town attorney, town court clerk, town judge or member of the town council related to violations of law or town handbook shall be communicated to all members of the town council by either the town manager or town attorney. Now, we could keep going on down the list if there's a, a whole big conspiracy, but, you know, it'd be the HR director would be next if both of these were, but, uh, hopefully that puts together the, uh, the spirit of what we're trying to do here.
Questions on this, did this cover what we all kinda had concerns about?
Yes, I think that was the big question about the, um, town manager and the, uh, town council. You know, how, how will the whole council be informed? You know, if there's a complaint on council members or one of us, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item twenty-two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment to the approved PRD for Dogwood Villas, formerly known as Stewart's Creek cottages, requested by Land Solutions Company LLC on behalf of SC Two Properties LLC. The property requested to be amended contains forty-eight one hundredths of an acre and is located at four twenty Multries Place, and it is a second reading, Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, this is the same project you looked at on first reading. Nothing has changed since first reading, this is a project that is, uh, located entirely within a, an existing approved, uh, PRD that is nearing completion, uh, just north of Morton Lane. Land use plan will support medium density residential. Grounding zoning is R one, R three and PRD, which is the Cedar Hills PRD in town and RM in Rutherford County. The approved PRD allows for seventy-six villas and thirty-eight two-unit buildings, as well as one single-family house, so seventy-seven units on nineteen point four seven acres. Single-family house and detached garage existed at the time, the original PRD was approved. House is now on its own lot, within a development, it's about forty-eight hundredths of an acre, almost half acre. Uh, the requested amendment would add one single-family residence, so it would be seventy-eight residences on nineteen point four seven acres, so we go from three point nine five to four units per acre. Existing lot would be divided roughly in half, creating basically the equivalent two or three lots of about ten thousand square feet plus each. Existing house is proposed to remain, detached garage would be removed and to allow construction, for construction of the new house. As I said earlier, this PRD is nearing completion, uh, there are no other proposed changes other than this one additional house. Uh, this PRD is required to comply with the Housing for Older Persons Act with a minimum house size of fourteen hundred and fifty square feet with a two-car garage. I get the road layout, amenities, exterior elevation requirements and all other requirements of the existing PRD would remain in effect. Planning commission did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin or anything, Steve, that you wanna add? I know we talked about this already.
No, I mean, this was really kinda straightforward, it, uh, it kinda takes care of an eyesore in the subdivision and, uh, it's, uh, makes kind of the, the problem of that garage, it's dilapidated, kinda go away.
Okay. Council, any questions on this? Okay, item twenty-three is consideration of appointment of one member to the Historic Zoning Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-eight. We currently have two people that have applied, and so if there's anyone out there that would like to serve on the Historic Zoning Commission, to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-eight, we encourage you to submit an application and we will appoint one member to that committee, um, at our meeting in July. Amber or Dave, anything under other?
None, pardon me.
None, none other?
She goss anything tonight?
No.
It's been a week, it's what? He said none other, none other.
Time got time, I just wanted to answer you.
I'm glad you just went on.
Scott, anything tonight? Charles? You know what, would you just come give us some updates? I mean, I hate to say it, I think yours is the thing we probably all get the most questions about, are your projects, so will you give us a few updates?
That sidewalk on Florence Road there, Charles.
I had my sidewalk over Washington Street at the tracks completed, so.
Oh, just thought we were under the bus.
Well, it's only six years, so, um, to get to this point, to get those sidewalks six years for one week of construction, so.
And they look great and they were definitely used during, um, Simplicity Smart, so.
Right, and like I said, uh, last week, the pavers were put in the roundabout, come next week, they'll be putting a joint sealer on those, so that would kinda give it a semi-gloss type look to it. And once utilities has completed their service lines, we can come in and do the milling, paving and traffic, uh, markings there and finish that project out. Inas Springs Road, you can see that it's pretty much completed even with the final pavement markings. We have one section right at the railroad tracks, that is required by CSX to have a flagger. The contractor has got his deposit, all of his insurance money, safety forms, it's a ton of forms that has to be approved. That has all been approved, and he's just waiting for them to give him a date, uh, that, get in there and get that paved and finished.
Well, and that was one of the things I saw on social media, I sent you a message about it asking, and I appreciate you responding, but, uh, sometimes, that's one thing that's frustrating for us as a community, sometimes there's things that are out of our control, we would've loved to have it, for it to have been paved, but CSX has requirements for us, and so.
Right, and if the contractor would just go do it, they, literally they had put contractors out of business, that they will come against them hard if they go out and pay within their right of way without having that notification and insurance and flagger in place. So, we do have to be careful with that, uh, for our contractors.
Great. Okay, other projects, anybody have questions for Charles on that we're working on?
Jefferson Pike, uh, getting the right turn lane there in front of Gills, that project is underway. And the left turn lane, working on the RFQ to bring a design consultant, uh, on to start the design on that project.
Great. Okay, thanks. Carl?
Your man?
Jeff? Kevin? Mike? Sierra? Oh, you have an answer? All right, right now, you're in.
Okay, so the auction items will be posted on June fifteenth, and they will be up for only a week.
June, or Ju, July fifteenth?
July fifteenth.
Okay.
That's what she meant.
Throwing me off there. Yeah, yeah. One speed car. So they're up for a week?
Yes.
And be posted July fifteenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sierra, tell us the truth, did Rex text you?
Yeah.
No, I, I texted, I phoned a friend. Oh.
Whoa.
She, we, we don't allow you to go back.
I, I did, uh, get the spreadsheet and have those quantities, if you'd like to look at them.
Sure.
And also, if you want our fire truck, probably get a good deal on it, bring a wrecker, 'cause the engine's blown up. Ain't gonna be driving it home.
I'm not driving it anyway, I'm porking in the front yard.
Wait, 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 can he do that comfortably? No.
Even if I pave it?
What if he uses it for a flower garden?
It's not yard art.
And not yard art?
Oh, see, it does move it every now and then, right?
If it's tagged?
Put some tags on it.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, if he can rebuild a golf cart engine, I've got to say, anything, my fire truck, man.
I figured out.
Okay, that, well, if you will email though, if you'll email all of that to all of us, then we've all got it, thanks.
Christine, nothing tonight?
Okay.
Todd? No? Mike? Todd? Dennis? Chief? Amber?
My man.
Got some slides.
Perfect.
Okay. So we had a community member, we're not sure who it is, at least I don't know who it is, but nominate our Assistant Chief Phelps, uh, as the outstanding emergency responder recognition. So I wanted to recognize him and whoever that individual was, um, thank you for recognizing our Assistant Chief, and I, I agree with them. Seen a little bit of Sierra this evening, Ms. Lowry is now our Director of Finance, so again, just wanted to congratulate her on taking over the helm, she's, so far, she's doing a great job in all three days that she's been in position.
And she knows how to phone a friend, that's all right.
Yeah. Also, I'd like to recognize our, um, our court clerk, Lisa Brewer, and Captain Bobby Gibson, they just completed Leadership Rutherford, um, excellent program, which I, uh, I have not done yet, but look to do sometime in the future. And, uh, congratulations to, to the both of them. And speaking with both of them, they, they found tremendous value in going through that program and, uh, encourage others to do as well. For this one, I think, Mr. Spearmun, you mind coming up? This, uh, is a wonderful program, and, uh, Todd Spearmun really kinda spearheaded this, so I'm gonna let him talk about that, go ahead.
A couple of years ago, we had a couple of students that we were interviewing, and one of the issues that they were talking about is they didn't have the clothes for the interview. So we got with Mr. Gary Winton, who's over at, uh, Montlo, and they had, were starting their Books Closet Program, which is donated clothing that they can, uh, give to the kids, they allow the students, rather, they can get two full outfits a year for, uh, to use for their interviews and other of those items. And so what we did is with, I have a heart for that, and I wanna make sure that those young students had a, every opportunity they can, so, we did it, and this year, we just, uh, did our second drop, and, um, we had over three hundred items donated by town employees, it's limited just to the, the town employees who donated their items. And so we got to go give the clothing the other day, and it was pretty interesting talking to the students and the faculty who was talking about how the clothing was being used, and, and I think if I'm not mistaken, Gary said, we just doubled their closet size with the amount of clothing that they received from us, so. It's a great program, I think, if any cha, chance that we can partner with, uh, Montlo State to, um, help the young professionals there, we even, we talked to business associates and other people. Anytime that we can help them out or give them a step forward, I think it's a worthwhile opportunity. But, again, I may have had the idea, but it was the overwhelming response from the town employees that donated items that basically filled up my office, and so it's a good program, and I, I really appreciate the, the town employees for stepping in and.
They were really excited to get the items, and they were talking about how quickly the turnover is for items for kids coming in, and it, when you go in, it, they have the kids take care of all of it, and I mean, it is set up like a store, they have the men's on the one side and the women's stuff on the other, and, um, it was really a good program. And they also have, um, somebody, they said, that styles, that will help them, work with them to style their clothes.
Uh, periodically, what they'll do is they'll have a style meeting, and they'll assist them, which I probably need to attend, according to my wife. What they will do is they'll show them more how to put clothes together, what options they can, they can put, and how to be more professional when they, uh, do have interviews or professional events such as that.
And the little sign you see like right there to the right is teaching them how to tie a tie, you know, those are things. You know, those are things you forget that, that people might not know how to do this tie tie. So, so it's a great opportunity. Todd, we really appreciate your spearheading this.
I do have one question of Todd. Todd, you know, I wasn't able to make any donations this time, I just ran out of time, but is there, is Gary the contact at Motlow or is that ongoing where you can make a donation?
Yes, sir. It's an ongoing program. Gary's who my contact is.
Right.
There's actually, if you see the young lady to the right, the director there in the very, in the picture.
Right.
She would be the person, but Gary is always willing, if you know Gary, Gary's always willing to help. And from time to time, I've done that as well.
Sure.
With some friends of mine had some clothing, I had them contact Gary, so.
Thanks.
It's not just open for certain events, you can always donate clothing to me.
Right, okay, all right.
But anything people would wear for an interview that females or males have, would that, I know they would be very appreciative.
Teresa's encouraging me to get rid some of my old stuff, yeah.
Well, that'd be a great place.
Yes.
This was interesting.
I mean, it's good clothing.
The students had actually, had needed shoes, and you don't think about the basic professional looking shoes.
Right.
And so we were able to give numerous pairs of shoes, and I know about two pair went out within twenty-four hours.
Oh, wow.
Of students that needed professional type shoes and stuff, so.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Are you done with your slides?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
So we also wanted to just recognize the new community that had their grand, their ribbon cutting here in Smyrna. It's called the Courtyards at Stewart Creek. Age restricted community, really nice product out there. They did a really good job and so really impressed again with, with the architectural, the interior. They, they use great materials, so feel proud to have them here in the community. And if you're, you're looking for a home and of age to live there, I highly recommend taking a look at that. And then just lastly, probably recognize that Heather's not here tonight, and our PIO had a loss in the family recently. Lost her father, Donnie Lewis, and so we just want to tell Heather that we're, her work family is here for her and that we're thinking about her.
Great, thanks. Jeff? Jerome?
Yeah, I repeat what David said about Heather, and I appreciate you reaching out to her and saying, hey, or us and telling us that you're going to distribute her service, services that she does, her, her work responsibilities. That, that take, I'm sure that takes a big weight off of her, and condolences go out to her. And each year is it too early to start announcing the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry?
It's never too early.
September the thirteenth, and we're in the process of solicitations for sponsorships. And then go to the website Rotary Club of Smyrna, Wings of Freedom Fish Fry, and maybe next month I'll get a slide made up. I do have two slides here. The first one, am I ready?
No, I was going to.
Okay.
I was saying, I was saying, make a note about a slide for Rotary.
Right. Simply Smyrna, twenty twenty-five. For fourteen years, Carpe Artista has turned downtown Smyrna into a celebration of music, art, flavor and community. This year's event was no different. Council members and staff were delighted to attend. A special thanks to all of the town of Smyrna staff that partnered with Carpe for the planning and execution of this annual event. And we attended, it was an excellent event. The rain came in about eight, but I think everybody enjoyed theirsself before then. And just special thank you goes out to Ryan Alley and then Victoria Wildus, who also helps him, helped him this year, so a great event.
It was a great event.
Y'all see where Mary Hester captured the zebra there?
I do, and Dottie Sims was actually dancing with the zebra, so that was quite interesting. Second slide, free lunch for kids. The Lineball Public Library and Smyrna Public Library will be offering free lunch for kids up through the age of eighteen, Monday to Friday at eleven AM, June fourth through July twenty-fifth. And that will be at the library. The other thing is, we've got a staff member that attended their first Smyrna Rotary Club. He's a Rotarian, and trying to recruit him, our new fire chief, so thank you. He attended during the event that you're going to announce.
Great.
That's it.
Raquel?
I have a couple. So Smyrna's YMCA had a Juneteenth celebration on June the nineteenth, and so myself and Ms. Marion Appleton were in attendance with the Executive Director, Derek Blake, at the YMCA. And it was a good event and they had a lot of people come out, so just wanted to give them some recognition on their event. Then on Saturday, June the twenty-first, we held our Smyrna, the Smyrna Juneteenth Committee held the fifth annual Juneteenth Celebration in Smyrna. And this year, we recog, we recognized Smyrna-born educators and we had five pillars of our committed, community, and those are people who have reached the age of eighty. And it was a family-friendly event, and there were food trucks, there were local vendors, and there were a lot of activities for kids. And I think it was a great day had by all, and many of the administration, council came out and attended the event, and I would like to thank you all for doing that as well. When I started this event, I co-founded with one other individual, and it was intended to just, to be a celebration of African-Americans in Smyrna and just celebrate all that we have contributed to history. And so now it has grown exponentially, and I was very excited to see all the people that came out to support the event. And as I said before, celebrating Black history is not just for Black people, it's American history, and we should all be very proud of it. So thank you all for, for attending and supporting. I also have another announcement that doesn't have a slide. This Friday, June the twenty-seventh at five PM, there will be an art crawl with, for the Arts Council, our name has changed so much, the Arts Council and Advisory Board. So it will start at the depot, the Historic Train Depot, and from there, the crawl goes to the Print Shop Restaurant, where you can grab a bite and drink while meeting the artist there. The crawl will end at the Trellis and Vine location, which is across the street on Front Street, excuse me, on Lowry Street. And there you can meet some of the in-house artists and you can, these are Melissa's words, and you can get your groove on with the beginner or intro ballroom class that is being hosted by Unity Dance Community. And if you're going to do the dance class, there is a fifteen dollar per person admission. The art crawl itself is free, but you can grab a VIP ticket for an enhanced experience. And if you're wanting to know about all of the different activities regarding art around town, please tune into RoundaboutSmyrna.com. We have initiated this website in order to try to be a central hub, hub for all of the different types of arts around town, and not just around town, but in Rutherford County as well. We try to connect with them. And we also try to promote businesses that are promoting arts in, in their particular locales as well. So if you're ever interested in knowing what's going on related to art, please look up RoundaboutSmyrna.com. And then I would like to say congratulations to Sierra and to Captain Gibson and Clerk Brewer, and thank you, Todd, for your spearheading the Bucks Closet, and for all the town employees who made donations, thank you for that. I think that that's one of the things about Smyrna that is just such a joy for us, is that we always are willing to help our neighbors. And so thank you for, for what you did. And condolences to Heather, you and your family are in my thoughts and prayers. And that's all I have.
She?
Indolences to Heather, it's tough to lose a parent. Also to the Hill family here in town. Ms. Lily and Hill passed away. Longtime community member, raised two kids here in town. Mr. Joel and the rest of the family, I'm sure. Just trying to go forward.
She taught school at Smyrna Elementary for a long time, too, so.
She did.
Made a big impact on a lot of lives.
Very nice lady, very nice lady. We also have had, just finished up the Smyrna Police and Fire Youth Academy. They had an incredible week. They closed out the week with a bang and couldn't be more proud of the campers. From hands-on activities to unforgettable memories, it was a week full of learning, teamwork and fun. Thanks to everyone who participated. We're already looking forward to next year. Now, I just wonder, we still have the Adult Police Academy and such as that, don't we?
Citizens.
Citizens Police Academy, yeah, yeah. When is that?
Sometime this fall, probably.
Okay. I would do that a number of years ago, and it was one of those real eye-opening experiences. Just to see what the officers go through, it gives you a whole different perspective on what the officers do and why they do what they do. And I'm sure it's so much better even to start the kids with it as, you know, early in life.
I don't know if you heard him, he said it was starting September.
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 Todd, the man with the answer. Very good, sir. Raquel, you're here today tonight. Yeah.
I do what I can.
Um, you know, we talked tonight earlier about the cops grant, and I was sitting here and I was thinking about it, that, you know, we had done that before, and one of the times we did it before was when Sally Walls was our Commissioner of Fire and Police. Sally was a very forward-looking individual, actually going back all the way to where she started as a patrol officer here at the Town of Smyrna and worked her way up to Assistant Police Chief. And then she moved into the Commissioner of Fire and Police and actually began to bring the, the Fire Department from a fully volunteer staff to, to fully staffed, which included just the expansion of it. Something else I was thinking about is how big a deal it was in Smyrna and how excited Sally was when we bought that truck that Steve's going to buy and put new shit on. But, you know, Sally. Sally was a very good friend of mine, and I, you know, just learned so much from her. Under the Commission form of government, we, we each had our own department. She had, she had Fire Police, I had Parks and Recreation, but then we also served as the council, as we do here. Sally sat in that end seat and I got the next seat. We did that for about ten years. She, she mentored me and many, many other people within the community. I mean, she, she could tell a story like nobody's business. She was amazing. But the thing about it was, is that, you know, you'd be talking to her and she'd tell you about this one and that one, and Sally, Sally, how do you know that person? And she had done something for them. I mean, you know, everybody that she arrested, she tried to make their life better. Just a very special individual. Now, I don't have to speak next week, I've already got it out of my system. All right, let's move on. Oh, that is, I'm sorry. We're unveiling, that was a lot of stuff, wasn't it? We're unveiling the plaque in recognition to the life and legacy of Sally Walls. Program's going to be at the Town of Smyrna Justice Center on Thursday, July third, beginning at ten AM. And you're all invited. Couple other little public PSAs, public service announcements. Love where you live, keep, help keep Smyrna litter-free.
Did you see what Casey added for you?
Oh, the recycling thing, yeah. It's on here also, and I think that's very, very important. It's something we need to talk about on a regular basis because that's going to be one of the, one of these solutions to the landfill problem, which will continue to raise its ugly head in the next few years. Another thing we have to do is also be kind. Shop local. Sierra, it's all on you now.
I got it.
So you got to tell us every time where the local sales tax is. Thank y'all.
Sierra?
Got a couple of slides. Farmer's Market is in full swing. You can go by on Saturday mornings from eight to noon and shop some of the vendors, the produce people around. Patty and I have gone down there a few times here in the last month or so and found a lot of good stuff. So come on out to see and these, these men and women on a Saturday morning and try to purchase some, some produce.
I think it might be trick photography, but those eggs are double the size of those peaches. Those are some really big eggs. Ostrich eggs, that's a good thing.
Okay, this picture is about Rex, his retirement party.
There he is, he is.
The.
I thought that was White Pants.
The, the Town Council was able to join the many family members, coworkers, friends and citizens of Smyrna community in congratulating Rex, the Finance Director and Assistant Town Manager upon his richly deserved retirement after more than thirty-four years with the Town of Smyrna. Rex official last day was Monday, and he was an ultimate civil servant, and it's going to be a gift, and, but you know what? I know he's going to enjoy retirement. It is, it's a, it's a pretty fun gig. Now, the thing about Rex, we would talk about what a great job and how we were doing and the things about the, the bond or the rating that we were as far as credit rating and all those things. Every time Rex would say, he'd always give somebody else the accolades, well, I've got good people that work around me, or we've got good people. And so he's always, he was always thinking about somebody else. And we'll miss Rex being around. His replacement is fantastic, so we won't miss anything as far as how the town's doing. But it was always, it'll be, we'll miss seeing his smiling face and all his kind words that he had. So Rex, if you're listening, we, we appreciate you, we love you, and we, we just wish you the best. A couple of announcements, as has been mentioned before, Heather, I'm so sorry for your loss and we're thinking about you and praying for you and your family. I also want to say congratulations to Bobby and Lisa on Leadership Rutherford, and it's a, it's a big project getting through that, and so just congratulations, we appreciate what you, you two mean to our town as well. And then last, here in a few days, on July first, I've got a grandson, it's going to have a sixth birthday, so happy birthday, Davis. That's it.
Steve?
I have two slides. We have Boat Day. Seventeenth Annual Boat Day was held this past Saturday at Jefferson Springs. Attendees include, enjoyed free kayak and canoe rides, hands-on kids activities, and learned about water safety and water quality. There were some giveaways, kayaks, coolers and life jackets, and just want to say special thanks to Town of Smyrna staff who organized and volunteered for the event. It was, it was a good event, it was probably one of the busiest ones we've had to date, and I think all of us made it by at some point throughout the date. So hopefully, if any of you, I don't know, did any council get in the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you?
Did.
Raquel, Raquel took one for the team then.
Took one for the team.
But yeah, it was, it was a great, great event, and I think since we merged this with the MTSU, with Murfreesboro and MTSU's involvement, it seems like it's just getting bigger and bigger, so thank you. Second slide is one of our favorite events of the year, if not the favorite, the Smyrna Independence Day Celebration, Fourth of July event, which is actually on the third of July this year, so. 4th of July event, which is actually on the 3rd of July this year, so Thursday, the 3rd at 5:00 p.m. The festivities will begin. There's lots of food trucks and activities for kids. The fireworks will be held at dark. That's usually around 9:00 p.m. roughly. And the rain date is gonna be, I guess, what is that, Saturday, July 5th, in the event that rains. So this is a fun event. Hopefully, the weather will break a little bit. It won't be quite so hot, but I doubt it, so be prepared. I'm not gonna go back through all of the thanks and congratulations, but Lisa and Bobby, congratulations. I know that's a lot of effort, a lot of work that you guys put in. And of course, Heather, I've been fortunate that I've never lost a parent. I cannot imagine how difficult that is. So we extend our condolences to Heather. That's all.
Okay, I have a couple of slides as well. I'd like to say thank you to Girl Scout Troop 2510. I had the opportunity to speak with them last week at the Captain Coos Memorial. We discussed responsibilities of serving as mayor, the importance of women in leadership, and the significance of the memorial. It's interesting, interesting, one of the moms said, as they, because they'd been to the airport before to talk to them, she said, we're going to see the mayor, and they said, asked a question, how old was he? Or how, and so she had to explain that the mayor was not a man, but it was a female. So we had discussion about women in leadership. So thank you to the girls for coming out. The Top Gun Night Run, our sixth annual, is September the 12th at 7:30. Join us for live music, great food. We only have 750 spots available. We sold out last year. I will guarantee you, we'll do the same this year. Registration is open. I will tell you, we have seen the shirts and the medals, and it is well worth the race to get your hands on one of those shirts and medals. They look great this year, and we're gonna have quite a few surprises, so.
Todd, do you have anything to do with that slide?
I'll get my name somewhere.
That's right. We want to thank MTSU Athletics for once again being in Smyrna for the Blue Raider Blitz. We had a great turnout today. It brings coaches, staff, and special guests directly to the fans here across MTA, across Middle Tennessee. And we got some team updates and coaches appearances, and also had some people win some items. I think Amber won a pretty big prize today. So, so yeah. So thank you to all that came out. We appreciate it and enjoyed seeing you. Congratulations to Little Blossom's Early Learning and Development Center, a program of Allied Behavioral Health Solutions on the recent ribbon cutting on Friday, June the 20th. Little Blossom serves children from six weeks to five years old, providing an environment for where every child can learn, grow, and thrive. And it was exciting to hear from some of those parents that really don't know where they're gonna turn, and for some children who have some behavioral health issues. Steve and Raquel, Marissa Morrow there, that we went to, Marissa Wooton back then, so I was glad to see her. She's a diplomat and is at Most Ribbon Cutting, so it was Marissa Wooton.
That's right.
Marissa Wooton is who it was.
Yeah.
Morrow now, so.
A coach, her son, Mac, in baseball.
There you go. Couple of items. Excited about some of the things that were on historic zoning. I know the new barbecue facility has got to come back, but that was there at Latavola. So we're excited about, what's the name? What do they call it?
Bean Brothers.
Bean Brothers, okay. And then also excited about the new owners of Wilson's Photography in Bridle Country. Looks like it's gonna look like a great spot there on Lowry. Also Heather, kind of been texting back and forth with her. I know she's really struggling with losing her daddy. So just keep her in your prayers. Elaine, we also went to school. You talked about Lillian, but Elaine and Andrew and Joe, keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Also, July 1st, we just forgot the slide. We're sorry. But July 1st at 4:00 p.m., we will be cutting the ribbon on the new tennis and pickleball courts at, at Cedarstone Park. So we encourage you to come out. I've had, matter of fact, the tennis coach, the women's tennis coach from MTSU said she was gonna be there. So a lot of excitement about that. So I think that's it for my list. So anybody else have anything? Okay, if nothing else, we're adjourned.
Okay.